Dr. Cordelino?
Here.
Mr. Daughtry?
Here.
Mrs. Fanno? Mr. Grau?
Here.
Mr. Palma?
Here.
Mr. Petrazino?
Here.
Mr. Rapidport?
Here.
Ms. Zuckerman?
Here.
Dr. Modrak?
Here.
My glad to meet you. The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provision of the Act, the Montville Township Board of Education provided a public notice of this meeting, which included the time, date, and location, that was posted at the Montville Township Municipal Building, all Montville Public Schools, the Montville Public Library, the Montville Township Board of Education Administration Office Building, the district website, and advertised in the Daily Record, the Board's official newspaper, on January 22nd, 2023.
Thank you. We have no high school student representatives here tonight. However, I just want to go for my fellow board members, they had a senior awards night. I saw a few people at the senior awards night. I'm sorry. I saw a few people at the senior awards night. It was amazing how many of the seniors were getting awards. You know, they say 10% of the people do 90% of the work in this world, and I saw 10% of our student body up there getting these awards, and it was really something spectacular. I also want to mention the science research program. Again, spectacular work done by these young men and women now. The science they are doing, as a scientist myself and someone who has a PhD in biochemistry, I can tell you, they are doing work that would be in the lab. They are getting really great experience, and I just wanted to say I'm very proud to see them up there doing that kind of work. And when you all, when our youngest member is here, gets to be in the high school, I look forward to seeing what you all can do. Okay. So, superintendent's report.
Thank you. Just to follow that train of thought, they were great evenings, and it was great to celebrate, you know, all these wonderful accomplishments we're seeing at the high school level. Tonight, you're going to get a little taste of what's going on at the elementary level, but we have, we've had a terrific school year this year. You know, you've seen that all year, we're back to, you know, the way school's supposed to be, in person, things were going so well, and we're still looking forward to the next school year. Personally, I'm coming to the end of my first year here, and it's just been a wonderful experience, working with the teachers, the parents, the Board of Education, and just seeing what the kids are, and as children, are just accomplishing on a daily basis. And these are the highlights of the Board of Meetings, when we have all these students here to represent and show what they're doing. First, we're going to start with Cedar Hill. Dr. Raj, why don't you come on up and talk about two wonderful people and what heroic acts they're performing at your school?
My good fellow. Good evening. This is becoming a habit of me coming here speaking before you, but it's all for a good reason. So, second time in the past couple months, we've had to utilize the lifesaving Heimlich procedure on a student in crisis in the cafeteria. First time a student was choking on some food, and a substitute teacher, which we honored a couple months back, performed the Heimlich maneuver. We'll fast forward to just a couple weeks ago, a fourth grade student was opening up a bottle of water with his teeth. I say this to the kids because my fourth grader often does this to him speaking to you, so guys, please stop doing this. He opened up a water bottle with his teeth, the cap became lodged in his throat, and unlike food, which is easily movable, I'm going to have the teachers who actually did the duty to come up here and talk about it, along with Nurse Nicole, who spent her part of her time in the beginning of the year, making sure that every staff member is trained in the Heimlich procedure, as well as our fifth grade students. So if I can have Ms. Maureen Moran, special education teacher, Matt Palladino, physical education teacher, Nurse Nicole with what we call not recessa Annie, but choking Charlie, come up here, please.
So, it's any regular Monday, and we were cleaning up lunch, we're getting ready to go to bed, and I heard some of the children yelling, "He's choking, he's choking." I don't know where I cried, I'm sorry. So, I saw the child, and I yelled to the two wonderful lunch aides, "Please call the office," and went over and started doing the Heimlich maneuver. It was the best thing I could. And then I saw Mert coming, and I saw Matt coming, and he came in, and it was over. My goodness.
Yeah, he was, I gave him like two bit Heimlich pumps, and I feel like I dislodged it a little bit, but he was able to speak after that. He said, "It's still in there, it's still in there," so I knew I didn't completely get it out. I haven't taken deep breath in his nose. Right when he breathed out, I kind of gave him one, kind of, I think he too got it through everything up, but it came out, I saw the bottle cap sitting there. You know, it was just kind of part of the job, you know. Thankfully, Nurse Nicole trained us very well, Cedar Hill, you know, so I'm very confident in my abilities, hopefully I can perform. You probably speak more on how choking Charlie works.
Yeah, so as soon as school starts, we have the children, you know, we tell the staff, I have them come. I also have trained my fourth and fifth grades, not one single class has gone through Cedar Hill without being Heimlich certified to, I am a CPR instructor also. So, before school starts, my staff, we bring choking Charlie in, and we go over this. And we have a Mert drill. Our very first Mert drill is on choking, and we only have to do one Mert drill a year, but Dr. Raj has us do four. So, we practice, but not only with choking, with other emergency situations. So, Matt is one of my CPR certified staff, so he was on the scene, and Maureen knew how to do the Heimlich maneuver, and my staff were all trained to look for signs of choking. It is an unfortunate situation when the child is choking on that bottle cap, but the walkie-talkies, every, our drills, I really feel like Dr. Raj had those drills down to the wire with us, and we were all responding, and the kids just exited the lunchroom. It went very, very smoothly and had very good results.
It's just wonderful to hear, you know, we train, 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 and then you hope you never use it, but now twice in a couple months, we've had to utilize these techniques at saving lives. So, we really, you know, I know how nerve-wracking it is, and how it can be, just for you to step up and do what you've been trained to do is just incredible, and we really appreciate that. We want to recognize this with just some certificates, and we'll take some pictures, but thank you for everything you've been doing.
Choking Charlie's in the way a little bit. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Rep. Zito?
There you go.
Ready to introduce our future leaders of the band?
Sure.
Evening, members of the Board. Thank you for providing us with this forum, this opportunity to showcase some of the great work we're doing here at Woodmont School. While schools are meant to feed the mind, certainly it's important to also feed the soul. And music is one of those things that certainly does feed our soul. We have a robust arts program at Woodmont Elementary School. So I'm going to turn it over to one of our teachers, Mr. Thomas Sansone, and our fantastic third graders, who are going to perform for us on the recorders. You guys ready to go? Okay. Make us proud, otherwise, you know, tomorrow, you don't get half day, you'll stay like so.
Good evening, everyone. Again, my name is Mr. Sansone, and here in front of you, we have some members of the Woodmont recorders. The third grade recorders are taught by Mrs. Ruckowitz, who could not be here tonight, so I am stepping in for her. And in order, we have David Karamov, Randy Fan, Daniel Bellerin, Hannah Long, Avera Said, Isla Verden, Alessandro Bautisi, and Haran Canori. We have four selections for you tonight, and the first selection is gently sleep. Our second selection is going to be merrily roll along. Our third selection tonight is entitled, "The Owl." And we are going to wrap it up tonight with Old MacDonald Had a Farm. Thank you so much for having us. These are the third grade Woodmont recorders.
Great job. Thank you so much for coming out, and we really appreciate that, and livening up our evenings. But this is where it all begins, it starts here, and you, you know, you pick up your larger instruments in high school, and you'll be performing in front of much larger audiences, making us all proud. So thank you so much for your time. Great job. Thanks. Great job.
Fantastic. Well, that's wonderful. You guys did such a great job. We're just going to hold all the parents off, okay?
Great job, thank you. Remember with the band room, this?
So I just wanted to update the Board as to where we stand regarding the 24 projects that we submitted to the Department of Education. Back in March and April, we had presented to you 24 projects that were across all seven schools, that their educational specifications were being sent down to Trenton for their review. And we had indicated that we were awaiting their review and then their notification from them regarding whether or not those projects were considered to be educationally appropriate, as well as eligible for debt servicing. Our original estimate in terms of when we thought we would hear back from them was August. At this point, we have received our preliminary eligibility cost letters, which means they have completed the review of all 24 projects. And those projects have come back with estimates as to the amount of debt service aid we would be potentially eligible to collect. In terms of the timeline, once the PEC, preliminary eligibility cost letters are issued, we have 30 days to then go and appeal any decision that is made, and then the final FEC, final eligibility cost letters, will be issued. Those are the letters that are the official letters from Department of Education for the amount of debt servicing that would offset the impact of the $70 million worth of projects. At that point, the Board would be in a position to then approve the questions for a potential ballot related to the referendum. So what we are expecting is that we would be getting FEC letters in early July, and that the Board of Education would be able to consider the two questions that we have put forth. The first question is for site improvements, interior renovations, and classroom additions, including multi-use spaces at mostly the elementary schools. And then the second question would be the replacement of HVAC units, the univentilators that are in the various classrooms at a number of the elementary schools, as well as Lazar, and then the security vestibules that are at the high school and a number of the elementary schools. So it'd be two questions, renovations and additions in the first, HVAC replacements and security vestibules in the second. That approval of the ballot question would then enable us to move forward in terms of submitting that to the county, so that we would be on time to make a September 26th vote for the public. In terms of where we came out on the PEC estimates, in comparison to where the finance team had estimated, they almost came in exactly on target. So the original estimate of about 410 as the tax impact would be the same under the estimate, as well as what we're seeing in the PEC, and what we can anticipate seeing when we get to the FECs in a few weeks. Any questions?
So with that, we've presented to the public four times virtually, and we talked about the proposal for the referendum, and we also did one that was in person to the Toaco Civic Association. We've had over 100 or so people attend these meetings. Feedback was quite positive from a number of people. We've had a lot of clarifying questions, and a few people, you know, that expressed some concern about some of the issues, but we were able to explain away some of their concerns. So it's looking pretty positive right now. We've got a lot of traction out there with the TAP. They picked up a lot of our articles and board presentations here. The Citizen also picked up just recently, wrote an article about a possible referendum, so the information is getting out there, and we'll be continuing to communicate to the public out there in the, over the summer. Right now, we, the Board has agreed upon two questions about a month or so ago, and that was preliminary, and we talked about the tax impact, as Miss Slunt just shared. So we're coming down to the wire now that probably we think if the state gives us everything we need, that July 18th, the next Board meeting, we're going to be asking the Board to vote on an official referendum with the questions and the actual numbers going forward. If that all happens the way we predict, that would mean a September 26th vote for the public. So we believe that we've done about six months' worth of work of presenting to the Board, presenting to the public, educating everybody, answering questions all along, and that puts us in this position that we believe that we're at the point that it's time to allow the taxpayers of this town, this community, to vote and decide upon the future of the schools and how they wish us to proceed. So if everything falls into place, as Miss Slunt just said, we're looking at July 18th for the Board of Education to vote, and then we can move forward with the county, and then get everything going for September. So, Dr. Modrak?
With that, I'd like to open it up. Comments, questions to the Board?
Just as Chair of Finance, continue to do a spectacular job in your, in your business office. And putting together this referendum really demonstrated the competency of the business office, as well as your intuition and your knowledge about efficiencies and effective work. You've certainly demonstrated that. So I want to thank you and the business office, and to the rest of the more executive central office team, including Dr. Gorman, Dr. Shorter, just, why am I thinking of Andrea? And Mrs. Woodring. The way you have framed this, you've demonstrated a definite need, you've done your homework, you've put everything in place, the demographer, the finance team, et cetera, and the way you're explaining it to the public is, really maintains the level of education that Montville residents are used to. You draw a connection between how important the classrooms are, so we can maintain small class sizes, which is critical, especially in the elementary grade levels. And so I thank all of you for that. Seeing what the projects are, understanding that we need the classrooms, understanding that some of the elementary schools don't have a multipurpose room for lunch or other activities, understanding that security is always on the minds of the Board, as well as the public, and understanding that efficient use of heat and air conditioning saves us money. I can't, I can do nothing but support wholeheartedly this referendum. And let me add that, that Dr. Gorman provided numerous opportunities by school for online programs where he went through the, went through the referendum step by step. I jumped onto all of those because I was very interested to know what parents and what community members were asking. And as Dr. Gorman said, it was positive. There were questions asked, and some of the elementary schools just outright thanked him and were supportive of the project. So overall, I would say that the feedback so far has been positive. So with that said, I'll end my comments, and thank you for the opportunity for me to share that.
Thank you. Michelle?
There's a reason why Karen is president of the New Jersey School Association. She said that very, very well, as always, and we thank you for that, putting it in that great context and perspective, which I think is very helpful. So yes, I mean, I'll keep it brief, but I agree that, I think it's, it just says a lot that you came in right on mark with the estimates, that they really understood everything that was involved, and, you know, that we weren't cut back, we're getting the full aid that we had hoped, and I think that's very important. I agree with what Dr. Gorman said, or what Karen said, that I, I think it is time that this goes to the public and let them, you know, decide what they're looking for, for the future of the schools and what this means, and, you know, for that reason and many more, I also wholeheartedly support it.
Thank you. And Michelle?
Hi. Just curiosity, I know the Township Committee did a formal meeting last week to discuss development and concerns, and they had a group of people that showed up. Would that be something that maybe you want to consider doing? Because I think we've been targeting just the PEC and getting feedback from them, but there is a large population out there of people that don't understand the referendum, they have questions, and maybe doing that to the general public, you might get some other feedback as well.
So, exactly right. So the preliminary meetings were to get feedback from the Board, so they could move forward, and that's what we've been doing these past couple months, to give more and more of the information out, and then come the end of August into September, we'll be going to as many of the organizations and committees that we can amongst the three towns, and sharing the information out to them and answering their questions. So absolutely.
And are you still aiming for a September vote to the public?
If, if everything comes into play, then yes, we, you know, well, the Board has to decide that on the 18th, and if you do, then yes, it'll be September 26th.
Okay. What comments? Okay. Seeing none, I think we can move on. I think the referendum is going along very well, I think everything's in order, and we do have a tentative vote for this on July 18th, so. Okay. The good news in our district, at our schools, is winding down at the end of the year. Still some nice things going on. The seniors, obviously, at the high school are getting very busy with all their activities. We'll see them in a couple days. Okay. I guess liaisons and committee reports, start with Karen, Finance and Facilities?
The committee met immediately prior to tonight's Board meeting, and basically, we discussed exactly what Mrs. Slunt said, so I have nothing to add.
Michelle, curriculum?
No report.
Joe, policy?
No report.
Okay. Communications, Mike Palma?
No report.
Safety, Mike Rapidport?
No report.
Liaisons, New Jersey School Board, Karen?
I did attend on June 9th, a symposium on school security and safety. I attended a couple of breakout sessions. One was to improve school security with a proactive approach, and the other was why cybersecurity is everyone's problem and what you can do about it. We also had a full assembly meeting and learned a lot. It was an excellent discussion on the Uniform State Memorandum of Agreement. And I brought home some materials that I gave to Dr. Gorman for their perusal. And that's it for New Jersey School Boards.
Karen? It's, I'm used to a little bit more.
Things are winding down.
Wow. Okay. We'll move on. Michelle?
No report.
Morris County School Boards?
No report.
Joe, we'll go with you. Morris County Educational Services?
We had a meeting last Wednesday, it was actually a reorganization meeting, it happens in June, the way they have set up. So we have the new president, vice president, and we elected 15 Board members, so that 30 plus are living in the district, so.
Okay. And we'll stay with you with proper awareness council.
They just pitched up their fundraiser for the long signs, had great participation from the parents, and, you know, I think they came out pretty nice this year, so it worked out well.
Wonderful, thank you. Charlie, Montville Athletic?
This is, Montville Raiders?
No, Montville Athletic Booster.
Montville Athletic, I didn't have to attend the last week, but they had senior awards the other night. They have a female athlete come to the year. Those are 11 teams to the region, play quite a lot of sports here, well deserved. Also, it's not part of any report, and I'll hold it now since I have the floor, but the Board participated in a relay for life a week ago, and I'd like to thank all of those Boards. Karen took the leadership as she did last year. And we did meet our goal of $1,000. We had eight board members contribute and two administrators, Tom and Katia, each contributed $100 also. So we made our $1,000 goal, but more importantly, we had so many youngsters from the high school and middle school participating at the event. It was a beautiful evening. It's something that they made over $62,000 this year, which is, and hearing the speeches about someone who are removing. And I think that next year, I think it's usually on the first Saturday, if you can make the arrangements to be there, it's a program. I know many of us have been there every year, some have missed a year in there, but it's a very well-planned project. Also, at the middle school, although I'm not the delegate, I do have a youngster over there at the middle school. They had an interesting musical two weeks ago, it's Spotlight on Broadway, which was fantastic. We went to the gym, and they had taken all the furniture out of the library and brought it into the gym. So it was like being in a cafe with the couches. The kids were fantastic. The leadership there, the band was outstanding. And again, it was a beautiful night, as anything connected with musicals have been this year. And that's the end of my report.
Very nice. Thank you. Okay. Liaison, Cedar Hill, Karen?
So Cedar Hill had their end-of-year home and school meeting on June 15th. And as is their custom, they celebrate at a local eatery. And this year, we had a reception, recognition, and celebration at Rael's. And it was a really very lovely event.
So I think it was the trucks program that they had?
The Hilldale Trucks.
Two ago at Hilldale. Very well-attended, beautiful evening. Kids are amazing. Every year, the projects get more better, as my granddaddy says. But it's really, it's going great. And I think there's so many good things happening. And I hope, as you and Katia and Tom have said about the referendum, that people come out and look at this, because what we're offering in our schools is fantastic.
I actually walked by that evening at Hilldale and saw the trucks program outside.
Yeah.
It was very nice. I'm going to be able, my daughter did it. Okay. Joe?
No report.
Okay. John, Wayne Mason?
No report.
Mike Palma, Woodmont?
No report.
There was no report from Lazar and High School.
There's no official report, other than wishing for Thursday's weather predictions to be wrong.
Can we take a vote, Michelle?
I wish it were that easy. Okay. Public participations. Mr. Riata, you are our public tonight.
As is often the case.
Yes, as is often the case. That is very true. Okay. Seeing none, we'll go to consent resolutions, motion for items I through N. So moved.
Second.
I would say add a change.
I have the one change on page 12, L13. And the date on there, the return date. Page 12. So it's at the very top, number three. And so that's Michelle Craig, and her return date is 9/1/23. That's the only change.
Give me that name of the person.
Thank you. Mike, which one?
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Any questions on the minutes? Section I, section J, gifts, hip report, there is student discipline action. Section K, facilities. We have a lot going on in K, both all the classes. Section L, other than Tom's mentioned, any other questions? And then section M, curriculum? And there's no actually policy on section M. Roll call?
Mr. Rapport?
abstain on section I, the minutes. Yes to everything else.
Dr. Cordellino?
Yes.
Mr. Daughtry?
Yes, abstain on K1.
Mr. Grau?
Yes.
Mr. Palma?
Yes.
Mr. Petrusina?
Yes.
The Zuckerman? Dr. Bogdan?
Yes.
Okay. Any old business?
I would just like to...
Mike Frum?
I would like to thank the MTA. I go around all the schools, which I drive almost every day, and it's something to do. I see the banners, and I see that the MTA is responsible for the graduation banners in each of the schools I live, and I would like to thank them for their efforts and their support.
Yeah, thank you. You know, not to be redundant, but I did want to thank the board for allowing us to reach our goal of $1,000 for relay for life. And I sent you all, or we did an email thanking you. We actually exceeded the goal a little bit. It was certainly a team effort. And I thank everyone who contributed. A big thank you to Charlie and to Mike Palma for participating and walking the track. Mike walked the track many, many times with me. And I want to thank Mike especially, who kept me company the whole day, even through the luminaria ceremony. And if you've never witnessed a luminaria ceremony, especially if you dedicated one of them to someone who's passed on, they're very, it's an emotional experience, and it's very beautiful and very heartwarming. And so thank you, board members, for allowing me to collect your money. And next year, we're going to up the ante.
Okay. Thank you, Matt. Is he talking about that? And Karen and Mike walked around, and those of us who walked first, that were cancerous or virus, walking around and hearing people clap and cheer really made a difference. And I know I was the last one, because they walked too fast for me. And I couldn't go around full more time like Karen and Mike, because they're young. It was very rewarding walking around and getting people clapping for you. And it was very, very rewarding, that's all I can say.
Thank you.
So we got a number of students who participated too. And just, we had a high school student who performed not only the National Anthem, but Amazing Grace very well. And we had a bunch of students from Lazar Choir, actually, who performed as well. And I think the director there is Mr. Green, so I just wanted to thank him also for bringing the students out there and adding to the festivities.
And then moving on to new business, we do have some general board comments and new business to talk about. And that are, those are the district goals and board goals. So you all received emails about this. You were given copies of previous district goals. We'll start with district goals first. Previous years, where district goals had been, as well as suggested district goals to choose from. Dr. Gorman has suggested that we choose amongst five. We don't generally have five goals. Generally, three is good, three or four. But he has suggested the goals of, first, the district will implement, enhance, and evaluate ways to address mental health issues as necessary. The district will monitor the completion of current construction projects, evaluate district facilities, and update the lamination facility plan. Number three is, the district will examine and evaluate learning opportunities for all students. Four, the district will evaluate the safety and security protocols of the district. And five, the district will inform and apprise the community about the bond referendum. So that's going to be our starting place. We can talk about those. We can talk about other people's ideas. But I just want to emphasize again, goals are broad statements. They're not objectives. Okay? They're not specific things. They're aspirational in nature. And we assign them, or we approve them, and then it's up to the district administration to devise a plan to achieve those goals. And then to monitor their progress, and then report back to us on that progress. So I would like to open it up for comments from my fellow board members here about what your thoughts are on these goals that have been suggested, as well as any other goals that you might want to discuss.
Michelle, have her hand up.
I was just going to say, we did have five goals last year. I think that these five do build nicely on where we would be wanting to come from from last year. And I am, I would feel comfortable with moving forward with the five goals as presented.
Karen?
Yeah, no, I did. Thank you. So I agree with Michelle. I think we could probably combine and go three and five, since they basically, you know, one puts advertising the referendum on the administration, one puts it on the board, and I think we have to be a team about that. So it would be one, two, three slash five.
Do you mean two and five? Or three and five?
Oh, we're on district?
We're on district.
Oh, I'm sorry. But I have, I have thought about that, too. Hold on.
Yep, you do. I would never have thought that.
Doing district goals, right now?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Doing district goals. I did say district goals. I even read that.
My bad. My bad. Okay, here we go. So for 23, 24, correct?
Correct.
So I, goal three, the district will examine and evaluate learning opportunities for all students. Now, I don't know if this is, you know, the appropriate year to ask for this, but because of the amount of construction that will be going on and, you know, management. But I'd like to see the goal reworded, if it's something that the board is interested in, and the superintendent is. The district will explore and evaluate innovative learning opportunities for all students. So I just added, you know, I swapped out examine for explore, and I added innovative, just because I think innovation is what sets a school district apart. And I think we are very innovative. And I'd like to see us continue on that path. And then I thought the rest of the goals were fine, so I think it's just a matter of paring them down. But that was one I was particularly interested in, because it had to do with actual programming and, you know, for students, curriculum and programming for students as opposed to the others.
And you would be thinking that this is, when you say explore and evaluate, that's not really necessarily implementing in the coming year. This would be an opportunity to...
Well, we have to give, I think, the professional staff an opportunity to see what's out there.
Right. And that's what I'm clarifying, in case you're not talking about actually implementing new programs.
No. No, we need to figure out what's out there and, you know, with a little adjective, innovative in there, so that...
I think we should put the word board, the district will continue, because they're always evaluating. And they're always, so this sounds like they've never done it before. So I would suggest we put the word somewhere near, the district will continue to evaluate.
Sure. We continue to evaluate innovative learning opportunities.
And almost we combined into one. Safety along with education, but, you know, if you don't mind, that four goals.
Oh, five. Okay. So right now, I'm hearing, okay, did you want to hear that one?
Yeah, I just want to say, I like the idea that Karen has in trying to make a continuing innovation. And I think the implementation, if it's available, great. If not, it may need to wait, especially since some of the items in the referendum, we're talking about creating more instructional space. And some of the innovative ideas may need that instructional space. So it may need to wait until September of '26 or '27, whenever the buildings are done before they can implement it. But I think identifying them, training them, whatever it is, so they're ready to go on day one, I think that's a great goal to have. And I do think, I know Karen misspoke, but I think she had the right idea. Goals two and five, I don't, I don't see the, I'm not sure I see the value of having goal five separated out from goal two, since it really covers the very similar topic. And so just for ease of management, it may be better to combine those two and have four goals with four.
And put number five about the referendum underneath goal two as one of the objectives.
Yes. Okay.
Or just combine the wording.
Okay. I'm not sure that necessarily needs to combine the wording. I think having it as one of the objectives underneath of it.
Okay. Fair enough.
It would work just fine. Because each of these goals will have, how many, what, usually three to five objectives underneath each goal. And those are the, those are the actions that the superintendent and his administration are going to take to fulfill that goal. So I think easily we could have the bond referendum underneath the...
Okay.
Number two. John?
I just want to say, I agree with the comments shared, especially Karen's comment around the goal three, that's, I guess, involving the students directly. I would just ask, you know, how is a goal like that measured? What would be the objectives?
That is, that is actually up to Dr. Gorman and his capable staff.
For number three, though?
Yeah.
So we would work with Miss Woodring and the principals, the supervisors, we'd work on different metrics we want. So we could be running some pilot programs at the elementary levels. We could be exploring other opportunities to bring some more innovative programs from other districts that have ideas that we can maybe make and fit into ours. So there's a lot of possibilities out there. And then that would be our role over the summer to really spell it out.
And what's also going to happen is, he will work up the objectives for each goal, and then present them back to us, and we will take another look at them. Right? That's what we do. So that you will be able to add some input at that point, too. I would imagine, and I do like number three. I think it's, I think it's very appropriate that we start looking at additional potential programs, expanding our opportunities. And I think there, it takes some planning, it takes some time to put all that together. He's got to look at the options that we have, and then if we're right, I guess, let us know. He'll update us on that. And again, this will be probably a year-long thing before you can actually sort of start focusing on what then we need to approve of in the following year, because many of these programs may take resources that we would have to approve in our budget.
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions on district goals? District goals.
So where are we with number one and number four? Because we've combined two and five, and we have three standing alone. So that leaves four and one.
Yep. So we have one, two, three, and four as our goals. I have not heard anyone...
Four? We included four?
Yeah, four is a separate goal.
The safety and security protocol.
Yeah, it's a separate goal.
All right.
Five is going to be wrapped into number two.
Yep.
And so we have four goals now.
Good.
Down from five.
Really. Thank you. I'm sure you'll add the metrics there, though, so.
Oh, yes. The metrics are very important, and we will definitely...
Right. So that's a good draft. I'll come back with that, and I'll start filling in the things that I'll share on the board.
Yeah, because, you know, we can make a lot of great goals, but it's really how you want to implement them and how we measure that. Okay. So if we can move on to board goals. Okay. So you have also received prior years, the board goals. There are also three suggested board goals for this, I'm sorry, or no suggested goals.
That was five. That's the old version.
Old version, right. Giving the old version. Okay. Sorry, there are, there are five board goals. Thank you for the update. Okay. First one is, the board will continue to support one another by maintaining a culture of respect and by further enhancing our skills through training. We've already had one training session this year. The board will deepen the understanding of the roles, responsibilities of the superintendent so that the board can most efficiently perform its oversight and accountability, accountability roles. Number three, the board will inform and apprise the community about the bond referendum. Four, the board will successfully complete negotiations for successor agreements to the collective bargaining. You might be interested, Mr. Riata. So we are entering negotiations next year. So we have that. And that is definitely a goal worth having. And the last one, number five, will provide the... And the last one, number five, will provide the support to the district administration to enable the successful completion of the construction aspects of facilities across the district. So those are our suggested five. Those are the ones that we're beginning with. For those of you who want to see our last board goals, you can see how it's laid out with action plans and how it's going to be met and measured. So does anyone have any suggestions about board goals? These are five here right now. Anyone have comments? John?
Yeah, I know, I realize I wasn't on the board last year. I know it was a goal last year, but frankly, I would say to remove goal number one. I think it's said, it's, you know, doesn't need to be said, it doesn't need to be put as a goal of this board, because I think everyone does maintain a culture of respect, and I don't think we need it as a goal, frankly.
Okay.
Well, what was the critical component of that, maintaining the culture, or was the critical component the training? For our goals, I would just increase training.
Well, I think that's a good point. I think the training is really important. I mean, you have to admit that the last training we had was actually quite, I found it very informative. I found, I mean, it was very nice to hear that lecture on the ethics and responsibilities of the board. I think it was very purposeful. So I guess you would favor keeping it?
I have nothing wrong with the training aspect of it, more of the maintaining of the culture.
So you would prefer to delete the, okay, to support one another by further enhancing our skills through training? Charlie, you have...
I don't know how you think of all of cultural respect. I mean, if you take that out, I don't have a problem with this. I mean, it's, I mean, it's not respectful of me, or, you know, man. Well, if you let the heat of the support one another and we stand trainings, I think we need more training. You never have enough training.
No, we don't. And I think we do. Karen, you did a fantastic job years ago of giving us that master level certification.
We got our Carol E. Larson under Charlie's leadership.
It was under Charlie?
Yes, Carol E. Larson was.
You did a great job. You did a great job there.
I don't remember our master.
And I spoke to Charlene when I first started this and expressed to her that I would like to have further continuing education to maintain our skills, because they do fade with time, and it's important to have continuing education, obviously, I believe.
Sounds like a great goal.
Okay, so I think for goal number one, we have, "The board of education will continue to support one another by further enhancing our skills through training."
Exactly.
Okay. Other comments about the other goals? How do you feel about the other goals? Anyone have comments? Michelle, you have your hand on the button.
Well, actually, in that first one, I would add, it's not just supporting one another for the training, but it's also fulfilling our roles to the best of our ability. I would just, the reason with the training, I would just kind of add that as part of the first one, for making it more about training. The purpose of training is also to help us fulfill our roles to the best of our ability. Just kind of adding that thought in there. And then, and I agree with what Karen had said initially about the board goal, that we could combine three and five. Which would leave us with four of the goals.
Yeah.
So that leaves two and four. I mean, I don't think the goal is to negotiate. That's going to happen. Negotiations are going to happen. I don't know if you mean any...
Yeah, I mean, we can take this, you can take that goal two ways. I mean, we, and I hope that Scott would agree with me, we really do enjoy an excellent relationship with the MTEA. Our negotiations are always very respectful, bordering on friendship, I dare say. And so I don't feel we need a goal to do that, although one could interpret it the other way and say, well, the goal shows that that's how you're going to approach it. So I guess I can go either way.
I think there's established enough of a core over the years that the MTA knows we're not going in with the idea of not trying to get a contract. And I think that some of the others might be more worthy of having it this year, especially with the construction and the referendum. And number two, it says, "The board will deepen the understanding," and this, I think, needs a little bit more clarification for me. I don't, what are we trying to do? But when I, we lose what the superintendent, what this goal will mean.
Well, I guess that one is going to be vague.
I know it's vague. I don't mind being vague, but let me know what vague is.
Well, I guess, Dr. Gorman, you would come up with an action plan underneath of that to be able to fill that out and explains us how we're going to be informed. And then the metrics to that, too. We do receive metrics with these goals.
Correct. Correct. Yes, yes. We have to know those. So we have, that's just a choice. I'm just trying to give you options from lots of different areas to approach things. So if you want to adopt it, you don't have to, but...
Well, personally, I think I like that one because over the past couple of years with the superintendent evaluations, we've had questions come up related to how we do our job evaluating you, and I think that it's gotten to the point out that we need to have that addressed.
I think we wound up with goal one, goal two, and three and five are combined.
Yeah.
So there we have three goals.
And then, okay.
Everyone agrees to that.
Wait, wait, okay, before we go on, then when you say, "We have goal one sorted out," let's take this one at a time. Goal two.
Wait. I just want to go over goal one again, just get the wording, because then Michelle threw in some stuff at the end, so why don't you help me out with goal one?
Okay, "The board of education will continue to support one another by further enhancing our skills through training in order to fulfill our roles and responsibilities."
Right, like in order for us to effectively, most effectively fulfill our roles and responsibilities. Exactly, like the reason for training.
In order to most effectively fulfill our roles and responsibilities. If that needs to be worked smooth a little bit to make it flow in your mind, feel free to go ahead and edit, and then just take a look at it.
Okay. Then goal two, you want to keep, and then we could work on that with Ms. Peterson and others and try to, the metrics that all develop, then we could do that.
Yeah, I get the sense that goal two is exactly what David said, so that we better understand the instrument of evaluation.
Well, both sides, so we get it, and...
Yes.
It benefits everyone to know what is expected, so... And I would... And I would, yes. Okay, so then we have, two is done. We are combining three and five together. Does anyone have a comment about the combination of three and five?
Isn't it the board's goal that the referendum passes, or is that...
Oh, that, yeah. Should be, no.
No. You can't say that.
Why? I retract that comment. Yes.
So you're just, yeah, you're just educating the public, and you're telling them to vote, and you're trying to get all the correct information passed to everybody, and then let them decide on their own.
As Steve has mentioned, we are not allowed to take a position. We cannot go out there and say either vote for or vote against. We just simply provide information to the public and then allow them to make their minds up.
And urge them to vote.
And urge them to vote. Because it is important. I mean, this is, these are the schools of the town, and the town really does need to take this seriously.
I know that we've spent money on people who have guessed, "Oh, it deserves a pound of gold," right?
I don't think you can have a goal that didn't pass.
A goal that didn't pass?
Yeah.
Well, gold is an formula.
Oh, yeah, no, but I was answering, responding to a question you might have heard, Charlie, which was somebody, yes, could we amend it to say that it passed?
Yeah.
That was a more valuable formula, raise the community about the board referendum.
Yes, but somebody asked the question, could we add the words and make sure it passes? And the answer to that is no. I know you...
So there's, right now, I hear three. There's three goals right now, I hear. Goal four right there about the, well, the negoti...
That's what you want.
So there's a fourth goal on the table, and I would suggest that, you know, as Karen said, you go either way, but I think it does send a message that even though you have a great relationship with the unions, it does send a message that it is a priority, that you want to keep it in good faith.
That's what I was going to say, and if you look back three years ago, when we were entering negotiations, we had that same goal, and I remember the discussion, so I was new on the board, or maybe not, so whatever. But I was going to say with Thompson that I would feel more comfortable leaving it in because I think it's a goal we need to have and need to say we have.
So that's a message that you have to send to the MTEA, Scott. It's a priority for us.
And leave it in as a fourth goal. Okay, so we have four goals now. Are there any other comments about the four goals or board goals? Okay, I think that we had the goals...
So we'll work on the metrics. I'll share that out weekly, and then hopefully we'll talk about this again on the July 18 meeting.
Good, thank you so much. Did you have Charlene come in? We didn't have Charlene come in.
No.
She's taught us so much over the years about how to find goals that you need to...
We'll find out at the end of the year what we should have done with the building evaluations.
Well, I, actually, I do hope...
I don't, you know...
Actually, I do hope to talk to her again soon. I would like her to come back and maybe do some more education. If anyone has ideas on possible topics that they would like to have her come back and talk to us about, feel free to email me.
We could look that up, too, and get you some suggestions. Do you want some of these trainings to continue as board meeting trainings, or do you want a separate retreat for some trainings?
I think in order, well, I'm not going to answer your question, but I'm going to pose them. In order to maintain our Carol E. Larson designation, I think we need further training, and that you'll get from Charlene.
As public, during a public meeting or a retreat?
No, it doesn't have to be...
Probably be a check in public.
So, okay, so I'll reach out to her about that. We'll find out what more we have to do.
Let's wait till after the referendum, maybe on the 18th, the people.
Right, right.
That's going to be a long meeting, too.
Wait on the goals until...
Yeah, I think the 18th, before we start working.
I can still give you drafts. I can still work on the behind the scenes. But just in general, did you just want to do trainings at board meetings, or did you want to have a separate retreat?
No, it's board meetings. I think I don't see anyone saying, send a day on your weekend.
You know, I will never shy away from a retreat because you learn a lot. Let's just leave it at that. You just learn a lot.
The other thing is, like...
It's very healthy. It's a very healthy activity for board members to...
I think maybe we should pull the board in the next meeting to see how many would participate, whether it's a one-day retreat or an overnight retreat, because it might be talking and nobody's going to do it.
Like an overnight Atlantic City? For Los Park, too?
No overnights, just a one-day retreat.
So the other thing is, I know you brought in Ms. Peterson for trainings, but there's other options out there. Did you want me to explore some of the other options of, I mean, you could have your attorney and their firm do some presentation on different topics. I could try and find other presenters out there.
Is it because we don't think Charlene is competent?
No.
That was, and we have a school board's rep.
I'm just throwing out a lot of...
Is paid by us, and she's doing the job.
I'm just throwing out options.
I'll offer her.
Yes.
Yeah, no, but there, it is possible. I mean, I've heard other school boards say that they bring in outside people, not, you know, necessarily school boards. I'm not going to get insulted if you don't use school boards.
Different expertise.
We're unhappy with it, and we'll get somebody else.
No, she's great, but there's different expertise.
So this is the whole thing about, it's about variety. What, you know, and maybe I'll have to poll you, what topics do you want to talk about? You know, some, whatever, and then we'll...
You know, I mean, there have been some, the Department of Education provides a security, school security program that they've done at county meetings, but they will come to school districts to do it. So things like that, where it's the Department of Education. I mean, I could cite other examples, but that's just one example.
So maybe I'll poll all of you and find out what your priorities are and figure that out. Maybe I'll do one a month, two a month.
To find out what our priorities are. Because if we have nine different priorities, I'm not going to go with priority I have no interest in. I'm not going to go with it. You know, just, let's find out what we need before we do it. I, you know, it's not going to be the school board. It's my favorite people going overnight.
No, you're not getting people overnight. I'm not doing overnight.
Well, see, that's it.
Thank you.
I don't go overnight. I don't think anyone is suggesting...
A night is great.
Thank you, Charlie. So you want, in other words, you want to sleep over at your house? Great. Okay, I think this meeting has devolved too far enough.
Motion to, uh...
Can we have a motion to end the meeting? Oh, sorry, wait. Our one public person, do you have anything you would like to add to the meeting?
You don't want angles?
No, you don't want to come anywhere close to this, do you?
I move again to adjourn.
You moved to adjourn. Just a second. Thank you. Excellent.